Welcome to this meeting of the Planning Commission of the city of Glendale. Could I have a roll call, please? Here. Here. May I have a report regarding the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, April 30th, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you very much. Please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your public, for whose land is indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next agenda item is the approval of our last hearing minutes, but I think we need to set this for our next meeting because I wasn't here and we only have two commissioners who were here present. Am I wrong or?
Can you accord for that?
It is incorrect. Yes.
Yeah. Very good. Then moving on, I'm going to skip item number five, oral communications. I have no cards. Next item, zoning appeals, old business. Number one, parking reduction permit, case number PPRP 1324113. Location 515 South Glendale Avenue. And I believe that we are going to be given a motion providing findings and conditions for the commission's consideration.
That is correct. You should have received that information in your packet. So if you recall, at that time, on April 2nd, the Planning Commission made the motion overturning Planning Hearing Officer's decision, and they approved the parking reduction permit. And so we have now prepared again the findings and the conditions of approval for your review and final motion.
Basically, all we need is a motion, a second, and a roll call.
A motion, a second, correct. And roll call. That's it.
Okay. May I have a motion, gentlemen? May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners.
Aye.
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 And very good. I got it.
Moving on to new business. Item number one, location 1229 Vista Superba Drive. I understand that this matter is to be continued?
Yes, we're requesting that this item be continued without further notice. To the May 21st, 2014 hearing, there was an issue that came on, came about, that we just learned from the Los Angeles Times, the published notice did not occur, and so we're asking for a two-week continuance in order to have that notice published. So we do need a motion.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to continue.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Yes, Ian.
Yes.
Chairperson Manukian.
Aye.
And I'm just confirming that would be a motion to continue without further public notice.
Yes, ma'am.
Other than the published one.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving to item number seven.
Let me go and get Viliya.
Planning Commission items, old business. We have none. New business. Location, 409-413 North Brand Boulevard and 121 West Lexington Drive. This is a street, which is to say alley vacation, case number 176V. The applicant is Nicholson Vertex LP. Rodney Khan, Khan Consulting. Staff is Viliya Zemetaitis. May I have a staff report, please, on this matter?
Yes, Chairman Manukian, Planning Commissioners. The item before you is an alley vacation, and I have actually a PowerPoint presentation, and if you don't mind, it should be right behind you as well. So, I'm sorry, Shnaz, it seems like the TV screen turned off. Jeff can help. Jeff, can you help? Sorry for the technical difficulties.
It's today is a day of technical glitches.
That it is. Actually, it just turned on right now, so I'm back again. Okay, great. So the item before you is an actual street, in this case, an alley vacation for the Brand Mixed Use Campus Project. The alley, as you'll see and notice on the screen, is the southerly half of alley known as Alley 234, located north of Lexington, west of Brand Boulevard, south of Milford, and east of Orange Street. The proposed alley vacation, again, is just for the southerly half of this particular alley, which is currently 15 feet wide. You'll notice this is an aerial shot showing the southerly portion of the alleyway. Currently, the project's site entails the Glendale Annex Building occupied by the Hollywood Productions on the northeast corner of Lexington and Milford. There is a parking structure on the southeast corner of Milford and Lexington that is to be demolished as part of the project. And then there are two lots actually adjacent to the alley on Brand Boulevard. The two existing buildings will be demolished as part of the project as well. Here you have before you a site plan of the proposed project. You'll notice that the Glenfed Building will remain as is. It's on a separate parcel on the northwest corner of Brand and Lexington. Next to it, across the alley, is the Glendale Annex, which is actually connected to the Glendale Federal Building, Glendale Fed Building, by a bridge on the upper floors. And you'll notice the site plan showing the actual building footprint of the Brand Mixed Use Project, which consists of 119 residential units, nine live-work units, and 5,000 square feet of commercial restaurant space located on Brand Boulevard. You'll note the commercial space is highlighted in a darker gray, and the residential component of the project is shaded in the lighter gray. The vacated alley will be incorporated within this quote-unquote "campus mixed-use" project. The alley itself, while it will no longer be vehiculately accessed or accessible, will have some sort of pedestrian access through the project. You'll notice that you would be able to still go north along the vacated alley. There's a slight jog in the project, but it is a pedestrian walkway that would run and continue north through the remaining portion of the alley that is not to be vacated and up to Milford Avenue or Milford Street. Here you'll have the project outline actually of the new construction portion of the project. Here is a photo of the alley looking north, and you'll notice the Glenfed Project, the existing building on the right-hand side, the Glendale Annex, the Hollywood Productions on the left-hand side, and the bridges that link the two up above. So this portion will essentially sort of remain as is, except be landscaped, but will be a vacated alley for use by the project and the current residents. This just shows more of the bridge overlooking the alley. Here is a view looking south towards Lexington, and you'll notice the tin corrugated metal fencing that is part of one of the restaurants that is to be demolished and incorporated into the alley, into the project site. Here is the alley looking south on Milford. And again, this portion will remain, the portion of the alley in the foreground, will remain open and will provide access to the rear of the existing buildings along Brand. It's that portion that's highlighted in orange, and that orange oval further south that will actually be the vacated portion. So before you, staff's recommendation. In your staff report, we highlighted all of the various features as to how the alley is consistent with the general plan. The alley is not listed as any type of designated street in our circulation element. We have not received any comments from neither the fire department nor the police department in regards to these alley vacation. And so staff believes that the proposal is consistent with the general plan as well as the downtown-specific plan, and that your recommendation would then be forwarded to the City Council for consideration. So at this point, again, you are simply making a recommendation, a finding of consistency of the alley vacation with the general plan and the downtown-specific plan.
That's true.
That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Very good.
I have a question. You know, I just moved, so I did not know until looking at the pictures. I'm on Lexington and Louise, couple blocks away from my home, new home. So the new address that I gave you, so is that within that radius?
Actually, if you don't mind, I'm going to go forward.
You're my neighbor.
This is the 300-foot radius.
Oh, okay.
Shown. You, unfortunately, Mr. Commissioner Lee, would have to be outside of the 500-foot radius. So I have a radius map in the case file. If you don't mind, I will look that up and see whether or not you are located within...
Maryland, and the next one is Louise.
Of course. Okay. So I will double-check. I also want to make note before I turn it over for...
I'm on Louise in California, but I think that's...
I believe you're outside, but I will double-check that as well. I do want to make note that we received an email from Mr. James and Mrs. Carol Welling in opposition to the proposed alley vacation. They cited concerns that the closing off part of the alley at this location would impact response times for police, fire, and other emergency vehicles. So that they felt that the closure of the narrow alley is unacceptable. So I believe I left, you should actually have copies of this particular email on the dais.
If I may add something, you talked about the review by the fire departments and police departments. We actually did receive comments.
Correct.
Fire department. Yeah, I think you said we didn't receive any comments. I think we didn't receive any negative comments.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. We did not receive any negative comments regarding the proposed alley vacation. We received a number of comments from the fire department, which would be standard for any type of larger mixed-use residential project, but none in regards to the actual alley vacation itself. We also know that as of our meeting, and this is related to us at our previous meeting with the fire department, that the fire department never counts on alley access for their personnel, for their life and safety personnel in regards to response.
Well, it seems like also it's going to be open, but it's just pedestrian, so they can still drive in possibly if you need to.
Correct. And they actually do have accessibility around all of the various streets, both, you know, essentially four sides. Milford, Orange, Lexington, and Brand.
So...
One second. Do we need to call a recess while...
Yes, if that would be...
Let's call a recess for 10 minutes, and then we'll come back.
Actually, it'll take me two.
Two minutes. Or let's just be quiet for two minutes.
I have it right here. Okay. If you don't mind, I'm going to go up to the dais. Okay. So if the record can show, this is the 500-foot radius.
Okay, Maryland. Okay, so I'm Louise.
If you're Louise, then you are outside. Okay? Good.
All right. Having resolved the conflict of interest issues, we can move on.
By 6 o'clock.
Commissioner Yasayan, go ahead, please.
Should be one. There's actually, I can bring that up. Like...
What's happening? We're, I think...
Are we? We're back?
I don't think we ever took on... I don't think.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're on.
So we have determined that Commissioners Lee and Yasayan actually live outside of the 500-foot radius. So yes, you are able to act on this particular...
And that we're neighbors. We just discovered that.
And that you're neighbors.
So the alleys are always interesting because they come before us quite frequently, but I always forget, the alley is an easement on existing private property.
Correct.
Right? It's not, doesn't belong to the city.
The alley is an easement of, and then the underlying fee title belongs to the two adjacent property owners.
So who maintains the alleys now? Is the city?
The city does.
The city. So it technically does belong to the city?
It's public right-of-way.
Exactly.
Which is a public right-of-way over private land?
Correct.
Will any of this be closed off to the public, the alley?
I'm going to let the applicant answer that question, but I have been told that, as you'll noticed in the proposed site plan, the area highlighted by the diagonal crosshatch in blue is the existing alley, but you'll notice that where the building outlines lie, there would be a pedestrian access way that joins the northerly half of the alley down to Lexington Avenue. So in this case, it would not be a straight shot down the existing alley that's to be vacated, but there would be a pedestrian access through the site from Milford...
North, south.
North to south, correct.
So that indefinitely will be kept public for...
Because of the...
For pedestrian access.
The applicant property owner would have the ability to...
Close it.
Close it off, correct.
So they can put gates.
They can put gates, but I have been told that the applicant will have these gates remain open during the day.
At night, they close the gates. Is that, is that the...
From, yes.
All right. Well, I'll wait until the applicant.
Mr. Khan would like to speak to that.
Yeah. And could, is it feasible, could it be possible to put a condition to not close those gates?
You can make a recommendation to City Council.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any questions? May we have the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and City staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located here in the city of Glendale. And as staff mentioned, our request this evening is to vacate a portion of what is a substandard alley. It's currently a one-way alley, and it is a rarely-used alley, especially in the southern part of it. Our proposal, and I'll speak to Commissioner Yasayan's question, our proposal is to beautify this area, and if you see on the site plan, we'll put in decorative hardscape as well as landscape. Our intent is to have walkability in the downtown area, to promote that, to promote pedestrian activity. And I know that this commission has spoken about that and promoting that in the past. One of the things that we're looking at doing is, is from Brand Boulevard to the east, to be able to walk across our property going west through this vacated alley area, and actually all the way through to Orange Street, because the owner of the Hollywood Production Center has a passeo that goes across there, and it is the same owner as this developer is. So we would have pedestrian access going all the way through from Orange to Brand, and also from Lexington to Milford. In terms of Commissioner Yasayan, our intent is we will have some security gating, but we plan on those gates being open what we're considering regular business hours, and that would be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So when most people are out and about, moving about, it would be free, it would be open, pedestrians would be able to move at their own leisure. Only late at night would we want to secure that. As part of the upgrades, we will also be increasing the width of the alley, the northern part of the alley that's going to remain. We will widen that alley an additional two and a half feet, so it makes it wider, easier to use, and be a two-way alley for primarily the corner building. That's the building that really has its access for vehicles coming and going from the alley. The other two lots to the north have one or two surface-level parking spaces, and that's really about it. That corner building is the building that really needs that access. In addition to providing that access, you can also see from our site plan, we're providing a hammerhead near the southern end of the alley so that cars that would like to turn around have easier access and maneuverability to be able to do that. Our project's subterranean parking will extend below the existing alley, and our building will extend above it and across the alley for the project. One last thing I want to point out, because I want to make sure that we highlight this, we are directly adjacent to the historic Glendale Federal Building, which is a significant building in our community. And one of the highlights of our project is to design this project to recognize that and to appreciate that. And what we did was we stepped our building. Our building is lower along Brand Boulevard and steps from one story up as it goes further west. And that's to really make sure that that important building remains visible and prominent along Brand Boulevard. Anyway, I think Viliya did a very good job in terms of highlighting why we're here this evening. I have both the developer and the architect with me. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to provide you answers. Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Khan?
No.
I had one question.
Sure.
Quick little question.
Sure.
Walking in from Brand Boulevard and walking, what's around here in this area? Is there any stores or stuff, or is it just part of the building?
It's a part of the structure.
The first floor of the building.
That's correct. It's not stores or anything like that. It's part of it. We do have live-work units on the ground floor. So you may have some activity from that, but it's overall the project.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any other cards on this matter, so I think we can... Are you finished with your presentation completely? Okay, then I think we can close the public hearing portion of this and move to deliberations. Do we have any...
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate that we're given the full project of what's being proposed along with the alley vacation, because normally we just get the alley vacation, don't have the context of what we're vacating. So I appreciate that. This gives us a much better idea of what's happening. And I like that the alleys are still open, which is made pedestrian-oriented. That's also very interesting, and the design also looks cool, although we're not commenting on the design here. But that's all I have to say.
All we're doing is making recommendations here, right? I'm ready to make...
Yeah, and I would recommend with, and also recommend to City Council, a condition to keep that public between those hours that were mentioned.
But that's part of the project, right? You mean, you want to, they said that they were going to leave it open from 8:00 to 10:00.
Yeah.
You want to expand that?
No, I'd like, I'd like to recommend to City Council of having that as a condition for the alley, for the...
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. For them to recommend, for them to consider to add that as a condition, if there's support for that.
Mr. Foy has a comment.
Because what the commission has to do is, because you're making findings of consistency with the general plan, I mean, that's actually the technical action before you. That idea probably is more of a comment than we would pass on as opposed to conditioning a finding...
Okay. Just a comment, a recommendation.
If the...
Okay.
If that's what the commission wishes.
That's fine. We can do that.
Before the happy...
Very good. All right. With that, I'm willing to accept a motion.
Is there a motion, or is it just a recommendation?
There's language available.
Resolution, I think.
Is it a resolution?
Yeah.
Yes.
So a move to adopt the resolution, is that, a move to adopt the resolution of recommending approval of a street alley vacation number 176V in connection with the mixed-use project at 409-413 North Brand Boulevard and 121 West Lexington Drive?
It needs to be based on...
Yes. Second.
Oh, and my mic is off on. Okay. So, yes, it would be a motion to adopt the resolution as was drafted in your Planning Commission staff report. I have a motion by Commissioner Yasayan and a second by Commissioner Lee in terms of a roll call.
Pardon?
What?
Pardon?
Can I call? Or do you want to call the roll call?
Oh, please. I'm sorry.
May I have a roll call, please?
I have my designer report.
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Yes, Ian.
Aye.
Chairperson Manukian.
Yes, ma'am. All right. With that, moving on.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business number two. 111 East Wilson Avenue and 215 North Maryland Street, statutory development agreement for the Lemley Loft Project. Applicant, Wilson, Maryland, Mixed Use LLC. Staff, Mark Berry, Principal Development Officer, Jeff Hamilton, Senior Planner. May I have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the Lemley Loft Project is a mixed-use development that includes a proposed five-screen theater, 6,000 square feet of commercial space, and 42 residential units in a four-story building. The project includes one level of subterranean parking with 45 parking spaces for the residents. The site's about 21,500 square feet, located on the corner of Wilson and Maryland. In March 2011, City Council and Redevelopment Agency approved a disposition and development agreement and a cooperation agreement that indicated the city and the GRA to provide land and the redevelopment agency to contribute $1.5 million for project expenses. The California Department of Finance approved the disposition and development agreement for the project as an enforceable obligation. The project approved in 2011 did not have onsite parking, in March 2011 did not have onsite parking. It was redesigned, and then on November 26, 2011, the revised project received City Council approval for a variety of entitlements, including an amended and restated disposition and development agreement that increased the GRA's financial assistance for the revised project to account for additional development costs associated with the parking. The Supreme Court decided in the Matta Santos case, the decision by the Supreme Court in the Matta Santos case nullified the amended and revised disposition and development agreement and dissolved redevelopment projects in general. However, the land use entitlements from November 2011, including the original disposition and development agreement, were still in place. The elimination of redevelopment led to delays in the project, and the successor agency, the successor agency to the redevelopment agency undertook a series of steps to receive approval and convey the site and amend the business terms of the project. The land use entitlements that were set to expire in November 2013 were extended by one year by action of the Director of Community Development as allowed by Glendale municipal code. The proposed development agreement before you today freezes and vests the zoning and certain other requirements during the term of the project in order to provide certainty between the entitlement and building permit phase of a complex project. The development agreement provides a... The development agreement provides a three-year term locking in the project's entitlements, addresses the payment of the park and library development impact fee as a pipeline development project, and outlines the floor area ratio and height increases being requested by the applicant under the downtown specific plan height and density incentives. The project, as submitted, received its stage one, will have to receive its stage one building permits by March 29, 2014, to qualify as a pipeline project. I mean, I'm sorry, I misstated that. Projects that were submitted and deemed complete by March 29, 2014 qualify as a pipeline project, and are eligible for older set of fees of $7,000 per unit and $2.67 per square foot. This project is a pipeline project. The development agreement before you will lock in those earlier, lower fees, and the project will be subject to building codes and other uniform codes in effect at the time of development. So, this development agreement does not affect its requirement to comply with whatever building codes are in effect at the time they actually pull permits. The project's height of 66 feet and floor area ratio of 3.0 exceeds the limits allowed by right in this zone. The project is eligible, however, for public open space incentives by providing 2,613 square feet of publicly accessible open space, which is 141% more than the downtown specific plan requirement of 1,082. The downtown specific plan requires that developers utilizing the incentive program and to enter into either a statutory development agreement with the city or a covenant. This instrument was imposed by the city council on their action in November 29, 2011. However, due to the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, the instrument was never executed. The heightened density incentives are going to be dealt with by this proposed development agreement. The project is consistent, in staff's opinion, with the land use element and the general plan and the downtown specific plan, based on the facts listed in the staff report. I'm not going to go into those in any detail. An environmental review has been performed on the project, and an amended and mitigated negative declaration is on file. This project does not have any new or changed impacts from that previously considered by the city council. That concludes my staff report. Before you today is a motion to make a recommendation that the proposed development agreement is consistent with the general plan, according to the findings set forth in the staff report. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
No.
No.
Okay. I'm willing to entertain a motion. Oh, wait. I can't do that. I have a card here from a Nubar Abrahamian. Are you in favor of this project or against it?
Well, we should, we should have him speak here.
I understand that. Yes, go up, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nubar Abrahamian. I am a property owner on Brand Boulevard. Property addresses are 210 and 208 North Brand, which is right adjacent to the, and right behind it. One of the properties is leased out to a bar, a tavern, a tavern on Brand, and the other is a hair salon. Most of our customers are parking there. Most of our only access to that location, as well as Far Niente, as well as the jewelry location, is through the back alley over there. Now, with the proposed, I'm not against a new development in the city, and I'm all for it, and I think we should have it, but I think we're overlooking the parking situation and access to our buildings, mine specifically, Far Niente, and also the jewelry mart, which is right on the corner. I don't know how the proposed, or the proposed plan or building is accommodating for the parking or access to the buildings located on Brand Boulevard. That's my concern. That's my complaint, and, you know, I'd really like to know an answer to that. Will they be providing additional parking to our customers? Will they be providing access to our building through the back? Because if it's going to close down with theaters and living space going up, we have completely blocked access to the back of our buildings. The only way to go to the building will be from across Wilson and across north on Brand. Basically, by closing off the access, we're looking at losing business. And the salon is actually operated by my mom. Building is owned by my parents. The tavern is a tenant of ours. They will lose business. Far Niente is looking at the same thing, and so is the jewelry mart. I don't understand why none of those businesses are here presenting their concerns. Everybody is worried about this situation, and I'd like to know if there is any resolution.
Very good. Thank you very much. We're going to treat what you just said as a question. Does staff have any responses to these concerns?
This, we could respond to that. I could meet with him after the meeting to show him the approved development plans. The context or the details of the project, it's my understanding, is not really before you today. Either Phil Lanza fame from our Economic Development Organization could maybe clarify what your responsibilities are today.
Exactly. Exactly. But I would be remiss if we did not answer a resident's concerns.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, access will be maintained from an east to west along, between the new project and the Alex Theater. In fact, we designed the Alex Theater and this new project, so that there will remain an access route large enough for vehicles and loading, delivery vehicles to come in off of Maryland in a westerly fashion, and then make that turn, just like they are now. Of course, there will be a building where the parking lot is, but there's sufficient parking to the south in the exchange garage, to the east in the city lot that is shared with the church, and then to the west in the Orange Street Garage. Of course, there will be maintained parking on Brand Boulevard, and there has even been some talk from some of the merchants about having valet in that area.
But if I'm not mistaken, the businesses that Mr. Abrahamian was referring to have parking slips behind them, what would happen to those slips?
They'll remain. That's private property, where their parking is private property. But you will be able to enter on right-of-way from the east to the west.
Towards Alex, hang a left, go all the way south to...
Wilson.
Wilson.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then you'll be able to access those parking spaces.
And that is, right now, we have that in place?
Right now, those, as you can see there from the picture, the cars on the left-hand side, those are all on private property.
Those are the slips that I was talking about.
Correct. And where you see the cars in the north, just south of that fence, so the black, white, white, and that will be a throughway, where you can go, again, from east to west, and then make the left-hand turn and go down that alley to Wilson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lanza fame. All right. With that, I think we're done. I'm willing to accept a motion.
Okay. Review of the proposed development agreement relative to the project located at 111 East Wilson Avenue and 215 North Maryland Avenue, that the planning commission hereby finds that the proposed development agreement is consistent with the general plan in accord with the findings set forth in the staff report for the project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Hi.
Yasayan.
Yes.
Chairperson Manukian.
Aye. Thank you very much. Do we have any community development department updates?
Just that the Glenmont appeal is going to go to council, and I believe I've already asked if you could attend to that, but that is scheduled, and you did hear the Glenmont appeal several months ago.
This is on June 17, 16?
We'll have to double-check the date.
June 17, yes.
Okay. And this is the property where they had built a retaining wall, and within five feet of that, they had built another retaining wall, that the side of the building was cinder block, but the front of the building was sandstone.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Okay. I'm ready for it. Do we have any comments from the commissioners?
No comments.
Very good. Then with that, we are adjourned.
Nice job.